Chair.
Yes.
This is Mayor.
I, yes.
I'd like to take that as an action item to discuss with the city manager. Take John off the hook here. All right with you guys?
Sure. Oh, yeah, you definitely made a customer.
The we all, we all agree with you that we have a disaster with our chart of accounts, but I'd I'd like to chat with the city manager before, and I know Mr. Fertato is in a position to to commit to something here without talking with Gabe, so I'll take that.
Yeah, I mean, in all fairness, I mean, I'm happy for the commission to look at it. I'm a little concerned about it, but this cannot become like the job of the commission to now figure out what the what's wrong with it or fix it, right? So I think it's probably better for us to sort of share our concerns and point of view on maybe methodology and how this should be set up so it has flexibility from past experience. But I would be, and I'm a little hesitant to say that it once it's shown to the financial commission, it kind of gets quote unquote approved by the financial commission in any way.
Yeah, I can discuss this with the city manager, but I'm not adverse to because in any case, it's within a timeline. In the July meeting, we could probably present the highlights of how we are designing it and, you know, what were the drawbacks with the old one? So it's not just, it's not just the drawbacks on the chart of accounts. It's also the functionality of the current system that's a problem.
Right.
I agree with Paul J that we don't want to get into the weeds. But with that said, this was a real serious problem with Central Square. And we want to make sure that a lot of people who are very knowledgeable organize this in a very logical way.
Yeah, we are not adverse to that. So also, part of the reasons that I forgot to mention here was when, why do we want to do a cooperative bargaining agreement? Because one thing is it saves us from going out for an RFP. We have seen that this is eight out of 10 cities implementing today are implementing Tyler Munis or they're implementing Oracle, which is a much more expensive and bigger system by going on the Sourcewell route. And we will, we managed to negotiate a 15% discount on the actual price. And we also managed to negotiate in the initial talks with them a five year prize lock-in. So the price won't change for the first five years. And then I also pushed them into the option to renew at a max of 5% above for another five years. So what that does, it also makes our costs predictable over the next 10, 11 years.
Nice.
So looking at what we are planning to do, so you're in July, we're planning to work on the new chart of accounts. I will talk to city manager about showing the commission a preview of how we are designing that. Also creating crosswalks because that's really important for people to be able to put the old code and get what's the new code or put the new code and get what's the old code. And we also plan to finalize the contract and scope of work within that month. Then going into August, the timeline, we would look at signing the contract, getting the software installed. Once we install the software, that's when the actual what you call it, the maintenance agreement kicks in. So that's when we would start having to pay any of it. And then we would, I have to identify by then we would have identified the project manager and what additional resources are needed for the whole implementation. And we would also finalize the implementation plan by then. Then between September and December, so the timelines are a little tight. We would have uploaded a new chart of accounts. And then we plan to do conversions for a maximum of three years of just roll up data. So there is balanced data, not really all transactions. And mainly on the budgets and the act for the financial system balances. And then post those conversions, we want to immediately start working on the position control, which is the number of positions that the city has and update the employees within the system. Start building the pay codes, the benefits and payroll data. Now, why would we want to do all of that? Even though we will, we may, we will not start using payroll, but we need to have the payroll built in because the budget works based on payroll. And then our direction is to have a better system to do budget next year. So the 2425 budget, which kicks off in January, we want to really use the new system to do that. So for that, the chart of accounts is important. And then the payroll data or positions and pay by pay and benefits needs to be in. Then between January and June, in January, we would kick off the 2425 by annual budget in the new system. We would also concurrently beginning testing on the payroll processing. We would go through the AP and AR modules, the PO and contracts and project management for the CIP. So we plan to go live with financials July 1, 2023. So that would be 2324. And that's going to be on the GL and financials payroll. It would, it would really depend because you don't want to do payroll between the, between the years. So the plan might be for payroll as January 1, 2024. So you break off and you have a whole year's data within the system. And that concludes briefly what the plan is. I'm open to questions.
So before we have questions, I'd like the, you know, there are two members of the subcommittee who had a couple of meetings with you, John. I'd like just get a little comment on both of them, please.
Sure, I'll go first. So I think that we did a fair amount that both John and I met with, with John Fertato and, and June a couple of times. And a couple of us met at different times. We looked at information that was provided by staff about what was some of the significant issues wrong with the central square. And I would agree that the central square problem situation has some very significant problems. For example, they were able to, one of the people was able to post an accounts payable transaction into 2010. And that, that is not, should not ever happen. You should be able to close a year so that you can't possibly ever change it yet. I think, I think that gave me my most anxious moments about what was really going on with, with central square. There are half a dozen, dozen, dozen other items which have issues where they can't pull appropriate fund balances and things of that sort that I think are a function of, of either the implement, implementation of this over the last few years or the software itself. But central square doesn't appear to be, they came and talked to us and we worked through a few items they were able to resolve. But they aren't really able to resolve they, some of those things they think are features, not bugs. So I, I think we are definitely on the way out with, with central square. My view of Tyler is that it is a very, very complete system. And it's going to take a lot of work with both John and the city manager to make sure that all of the people that are issuing purchase orders and working with payroll and that sort of stuff will all be, have to be invested in this process to make sure that it's actual functioning when we're done with it. But I get a good feeling from John that he's, he understands the, the, the size of the project and the risk.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clarice?
I echo much of what Art has said. I think the Tyler technology will solve our problem. The implementation is going to take a while. And we want to make sure that we don't repeat the errors that were done with central square. That was my questions with regard to the chart of accounts. And then I want to make sure that a lot of people look at it at a high level. It's not my intent to get into the weeds. It's just the organization and such that we have the flexibility that people have thought through how this is laid out. And because we're going to live with this for a very long time. And that level of planning will serve us very well in the years to come.
Okay, so that, that is been my first question. I mean, and who is helping us implement this thing? I hope there's a budget for someone from Tyler to actually, even if it's just oversight or review or something. If not, I think we should seriously consider that because you all, you all have a full-time job already, you and June, right? So this is, this is what broke our last organization. We had three people quit because they were told to do this in their spare time.
Yes, so there are two, two things. One is between us and Tyler, if, if we look at their proposal, there are implementation hours there, a lot of this cost is on implementation. Each of those modules would have a Tyler expert who's helping you along the way. But we also need internal resources that would work with the Tyler consultants on each of these. And that's why you would see in my July, August plan, that's when, you know, we will start once this commission approves that the system, we can go ahead with the system purchase. The city council approves that, yes, we can move ahead. Then we will plan on the resources, resource requirement and talk on that as well in the next meeting most likely.
How long is the period or is there a period where you're doing double data entry into both systems? And are you, are you staffed for that?
So we would, we would have, the plan is to do July 1 would be our full life. But before that, we would be doing a lot of things in the test environment, trying to, to do journal and increase AP, ER, you know, all those functions within the test data base to map. Payroll would be implemented sometime in January of 24. So between the first of July 23 and, and that day, there would be opportunity to run parallel tests as well. Specifically related to payroll.
But so you actually specifically, I didn't hear, I mean, I didn't hear that, maybe I didn't hear it correctly. You're not planning to actually do data entry into systems for a period while checking the validity of the new system. So make sure that, you know, you put something into one and one is a known system, which is a current system. And you put something into the unknown new system that you get the right, you know, effect on your balance sheet, P and L, fund account, et cetera. Right? So you want to see it roll through all the way.
Right, so the, the way it would work is all, so as you know, even though our books close on 30th of June, we actually physically close a system sometime in August or September. We, we don't really close because we still are posting entries, we're getting payments and everything is happening along the way. So the way these implementations would work is whatever's coming related to the prior year. That's why we're cutting off on the financial year. Any data related to the old financial year would go into the old system. And whatever is new, any new payments and stuff would go into the new system. So if you're talking about cutting a check related to FY 2023, that would be processed in the Tyler Munis system. At the same time, three months before that, we would have done test runs on data to make sure that those modules work.
Okay.
Yeah, because other than payroll, so the critical one is payroll, right? Other than payroll, if, if something's not working, it doesn't stop you from functioning. You can still go back and use the old system. But if it's payroll, that's when you can get into trouble. So that needs, that's one of the reasons why I'm proposing that payroll be implemented six months after the GL is implemented.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not trying to hog it. So I have one more question, but I let someone else ask that question first. Anybody else?
Um, I have one, I guess one things that I'm interested in is making, I don't see it as a, as an element. It probably is, just didn't mention it. Very interested in having a, an assessment of your systems of internal control and your segregation of duties because you're a fairly small organization. I would really like to see a, a plan for, you know, who will have access to both the control of and access to assets, specifically cash and those sorts of things, so we can be comfortable that the appropriate controls exist. And I would, and I would expect your auditors should be interested in, in having an opinion about that as well.
And, and are you saying in terms of how people can access the system?
I think that, yeah, part of the way that the, the IT part of this thing is set up that if you're, if there are super users that have the ability to do various things in the system, that those super users, we understand what their capabilities are and what are the checks and balances on them. And, you know, that we don't have the same person working on signing payroll checks and receiving cash from the city for the.
And those are, those are very valid questions. Yes, that's one of the challenges we are currently having. You can do anything and everything in our current system. So part of the way this works is in our implementation, there's also IT training that is involved. So the whole functionality of granting access will be in IT. We will, that document is very much reviewed by the external auditors. They want to see the workflow, they want to see how, how each of the individuals within the finance department, what are their permissions, what they can and cannot do.
Right.
And what usually happens is in the implementation phase, almost all the users will have a super, super user access. But exactly before you go live, all that would go away and it would fall into the, into the plan of each person's use, use needs. So most likely you would see in a system like this that very few people will be able to access payroll data, even though they're in the finance department.
Or sort of a new vendor, for example.
Right, right. John, is there going to be a procedure or policy for who has access to what?
We would have one, once, once we understand how the system is functioning. And we would cater that based on how the new system works versus going in with something before we know how processes would be.
Well, I would think Tyler technologies could help us with that understanding. Once we have the chart of accounts and Tyler technology and input from the auditors, we could create a policy and procedure that will protect the city and make sure that only the appropriate people have access to critical functions.
I think that the, the Tyler will be very good at telling us all of the things you can do. And what the auditors will be trying to do is to assess what limitations should be put on that by various people inside the company. One of the things that I think is terrifically valuable, if this is going to be a cloud-based system. So nobody has the ability to walk up to a server and, and start, you know, making entries into, onto a hard disk someplace, right?
Right, and Tyler does give you an open box. So you, you need to sit and set each of those modules up. They won't, they will give you during the implementation, they will tell you what, what are best practices. But they will expect you to say what you need.
Yes, and, and that will be one of the more complex parts of this, as you work on this, John, I believe, going forward.
Will Tyler provide us a report where they can tell us if we're going off the rails on anything? Where we have an oversight, where we, maybe we missed something that they're, they'll, they'll obviously know their system far better than us. And when they look at our chart of accounts, our particular types of ways we set up the different levels of authorization, will they provide us a report that says, hey, you've got some holes in this system? Because we, we, I think we'd all like this system to work hopefully the first time and not have to implement a new system in, in the near future.
Yeah, we can, we can check with them. I know that they do have their best practices. Usually what they, what they offer is after your implementation, they offer annual review. There is a separate, it's called pace hours. So usually a lot of cities sign up for pace hours. So those include going, it's not a new module. So let's say you have your payroll module, you can set up a couple of days with the experts to review how it's working and whether you have all your ducks in a row. So they do offer that service, but it's not part of what we have now. It's mostly post implementation.
My, my guess is that you can probably do, Tyler will let you do a lot more than we want you to be allowed to be able to do. That you do want to have segmentation duties so that you can't, it, it, it does require collusion to do, to do fraud in the, in the, in the city.
Right, and that's why it's important for, for our IT to also understand those divisions and how they're, how they should be. You know, if, if I'm requesting access to enter and post, they should have the ability to say no.
Yes.
I, it would be with them, but they need the authority too.
Correct. So I just want this to be a, as you work on this, this needs to be, I will ask you about this from time to time as we go through it. So don't be surprised.
As will I.
This is, this is the most common thing that the auditors ask us anyway, so they will be checking this too. I had a question about the, about the output of the system. I mean, we've always had terrible report writers and stuff like that out of the current system. You know, we're always relying on PowerPoint to actually talk about numbers. You know, we never know if it's a source of truth or, you know, this is just somebody's spreadsheet that's stale. So we've always had a concern about that, even Commissioner Nanda, I think, had one time a crinkle in her eye about being able to get quarterly reports. Any, any, any hope that this is going to have a better standard canned reports that are easy to produce? It won't take like a week of some analyst work?
Yeah, so with, with any system, it, if it's garbage in, garbage out, right? So I think with Munis, they've got a pretty robust reporting. State reporting comes out of, of the system, all your state reports, your, your compensation reports, your regulatory reports are out of the box. You have internal budget to actual reports, your trial balance, by fund, everything has canned reports. In addition to that, you also have what's called cube reports. So cube reports are designed in an Excel worksheet, but they're connected to the database. So they would read your database and you would have a, it's a one day old data. So whatever's, if I set, set up a department with the revenue to budget projection, matching, what's their variance, they can see that on a daily basis by just opening the sheet. It's connected to the database, it's not manipulated outside.
Okay, great, that's good progress. Any other questions?
Only one, Kuljeet, John. Have you made friends with and or talked to some of the cities on your reference list who are around your size? Because everybody's going to have the list of, holy smoke, if I knew the following three things before we started doing it, would have been easier. And last time I did this, frankly, we were so much bigger than anybody else in our business that everybody was waiting for us to figure it out. But you got a lot of guys that look like they're 50 to $100 million kind of revenue cities who look like they've implemented this, where we, in terms of making sure they're happy and having people we can talk to when we inevitably hit the wall on issue A, B, or C.
So there, I have a network of cities that are using the system. So we, we talk to each other. In my previous to implementation, we talked to a lot of other cities and helped each other out. A lot of bigger sized cities have had more trouble with implementing it because of their cross-departmental size and having to depend on, you know, different departments. They have done the GL well, but they have not done the budget well. So part of the reason that I've seen and I've helped a couple of cities to in planning the budget side of it, because you need to understand payroll to do budget. Because the way Munis budget works, it's, it's an extension of, or you, you would say it's a copy of your payroll. Your, your whole payroll is copied into the budget module and then you run all your scenarios and your increases and everything there. So a lot of budget analysts don't understand how payroll works. And then that's where they make their mistakes. So I think we are strong in being able to get support from other cities as well.
Thank you, that was a good question, Tom. All right. So next step is, this is a support, this is not for us to hold on, is it?
So it is, in a way, I would say, maybe we should want to move this as a recommendation to the city council. So I would like to take a word that if you feel that's okay, Chair.
Sure.
Okay.
So, so, so move that we recommend purchase of this on these terms to city council.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So I'll take the role, Chair Cocker.
Yes.
Vice Chair of Pachy.
Ah, yes.
Commissioners Clarice?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Call back?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Whitwell?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes seven to zero. Vice Chair, can I have the time that you got in?
I was here at 6:17.
Okay, so did you have any questions on the presentation or you were able to see most of it?
I, I was able to see most of it. The only question I had is, are you going to be able to do the, since you're delaying the payroll implementation until January 2024? Are you going to be able to do a budget from this, from this, from the software module in 2023?
Correct, and because we are going to work on having the payroll data in and the position in, it's important to have the authorized positions and then build all the benefit structure within the system. And the idea is that if you go in and do a new budget, you start in January and then you adopt in somewhere in June. So between that period of January to March, you are still doing your operating budget more than your personnel budget. So you have enough time to crunch your personnel budget and also do your testing on all the other fields. Because end of the day, it's all about your resources and how you can stretch them to complete the project.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we just have staff announcements. So I'm pleased to say that last, on June 14, we presented the media budget and FY 22 cleanup to the city council. There was a probably less than two hours of discussion. There were no changes, they adopted as is with, with the FY 22 changes proposed and recommended by the commission. With the, with the 23, the only change was an additional recommendation to appropriate 50,000 for CSA, which did not go through the commission in the first round. So part of it was funding the chair, I believe the chair is also a member of CSA. Yeah, so that was the only addition to the budget. And it, it was adopted unanimously. June, do you have any staff report from your side?
Oh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
So, John, I have one question. Tell me about your staffing issues at this point. Are you fully staffed? Do you have open recs? What, what's going on?
So we, we have a few issues. We have our payroll technician who's been unwell for, I think, almost nine months. We have our payroll technician who's been unwell for, I think, almost nine months now. So she was working short hours or not able to complete full hours of of late, she's been on unpaid leave. So I think almost three weeks, three, maybe, June would know, is it two months to now since she's been on unpaid leave?
Unpaid leave, yes, it's about the one, a two pay period for the one month. And then, but she's been completely off and since April. She hasn't been able to work since April.
Right, so we are looking at that. And then we hired three new staff since we joined. They're doing well, they've been busy trying to get a lot of the pending stuff done. We have, one of the new staff was actually learning and backing up payroll right now. And she's pretty smart, so we hope to continue with her. We are unsure about what will be the situation with the other payroll technician. And we have a few issues with some of the others, older staff at this time.
Go ahead.
Who else? I had a question. Do you know if the city council is proposing meetings in person yet?
I believe that it will be after the break, I believe. It will be reviewed after the break. I'm not sure if the mayor has anything on that.
We're all hopeful we can come back in person after the break, but we are bound by the county and ultimately state guidelines and directives. So if the county, the county is now back to recommending people be on.
We lost you.
Lost you, Adia.
Sorry. It depends on what the county and the state do. Even some of the cities that were on hybrid have now gone back to meeting entirely remotely because of the current surge. So we'd like to come back to at least a hybrid. And that's the hope and plan for after the summer break. But that will depend on the county's orders and the county guidance.
So, so, Adia, the city is okay with it? There's nobody on the council who's against meeting even with the county?
There has not been that level of discussion. What there has been is the continuing affirmation to follow county guidance and the hope that circumstances are such that we'll be able to move to hybrid, you know, whenever we can move to hybrid. And that we'll do the council first and kind of will pilot it, if you will, because there's a number of technical challenges with hybrid meetings as some of our fellow cities are finding out. And then likely would do planning commission next because of their legal role. And it wouldn't surprise, it wouldn't surprise me, although I don't think anybody has yet said that you guys would be next because similarly you have a legal, you have a fiduciary role here in the city.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, we got done today.
So I have one quick announcement for Chairman Kalkat and Mr. Furtado. I will be missing in the next July council session or financial commission session because I will be in Europe. So I will apologize now for missing the next meeting, but I won't be there.
I'm sure you're not very sad about that. We will miss you, but you probably won't miss us.
I'll be in Bordeaux, so I'll be enjoying a little red wine.
Okay, we stand adjourned then.
Okay.